Want to turn the owl and raise the broom?
Well, I'll go all the way around the circle.
Oh, that's
You can turn it any way you want. See little eyes there and little eyes there and little eyes over there. It's You can't get away from it.
Oh, good.
Eyes in the back of his head.
Right now, let's look at that cake. If you talk, it will go to you.
I don't want to think.
It'll
Okay, it's seven o'clock, so we're going to call this meeting to order and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll call up Jay Ponsby.
Here.
Frank Rubish.
Rubisich here.
Rubish?
Rubisich.
Kate Shrank here.
David here.
All ten special here.
Okay. Now, first item is to approve our agenda for the evening. Need a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Or with changes?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented. And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And our next item is to approve the minutes from our prior meeting. Are there any changes that are needed? Need, I guess we need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve. Hey, I'll second.
Any changes? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous. Do we have any public comments? Karen?
Thank you. I can't say very long, but I threw something together regarding short-term rentals. I've been thinking about this, as you have. It is incumbent upon any business owner to perform their own due diligence regarding state and local regulations. We have identified several landlords, what landlords, that proceeded at their own risk and in violation of township zoning ordinance. Based upon Township Attorney Genovich, Repairian Attorney Clifford Bloom, Michigan Court Cases, Columbia Township Master Plan, and approximately a hundred petitioners. It is then my recommendation that the practice of STR be banned altogether and that all known landlords be given a sunset period through 2026. On a different topic, I think you're looking at the end of year and who might be expiring. I think maybe it was in the agenda for the next meeting for the board. I, I don't think Jay is expiring. I think it's just Frank, Miss Goran. And I can give you the dates and we can look at past meeting minutes, so just letting you know that. And I don't know if Frank has done that PC training and whether or not you want to be re-upped. That's not the decision for tonight anyway. I'm just throwing it out there. And with so much turnover on the planning commission over the years, it is no wonder if the zoning ordinance did have some gaps. And I hope it does turn out to be money well spent for engaging that Williams and Works. And I just want you all to know, as one of the people that does come to a lot of the meetings, I do appreciate and know that work goes into these and I do thank you for that important work.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Dan. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, my name's Jackie Peacock. I have a cottage now on Northlake, so I'm brand new to the community. It took us all so long to close. My concern about the STR draft ordinance as written is that the level of administrative burden really favors full-time STRs and will make it, like if you can have a full-time employee who's the one to answer the phone on this one-hour notice, right, and you have to spend money getting your septic tank inspected every three years, which I think is reasonable, but I'm also doing an annual renewal, that's going to be manageable for someone who's full-time STRing out their property, but will make it difficult for owners, which was sort of what we had considered, who wanted to STR their house a couple of weeks of summer when we're not using it to help, you know, cover our property tax and whatever else. And so I personally, I think I would rather have an ordinance that made it impossible to run a full-time STR business out of your home because that's the neighbor that I don't want and made it possible, if we are going to allow STRs at all, for individuals to rent out houses that are, many houses are vacation houses. I don't think we're the only one who doesn't live full-time in our lake house. To allow that, but not to allow someone to own as an investor a house and a full-time STR. And I think the way it's written right now, it favors what I would rather disfavor, which would be that full-time STR. There are also a couple of, the, the one-hour contact period, I think, is a concern for me in the context of someone who might be complained about, like, I have seven acres and a little small house, so if my in-laws stay with me, they'll probably stay in an RV. And if that's something that's not allowed in an STR, but I think is normally allowed, right, to have an RV stay on my property. Now someone's calling you to complain about how there's an RV on my property and it's an STR. Then you're dealing with these kinds of complaints about things that are normally fine, what wouldn't be fine in an STR? And that those differences between normal property use and STR limitations might cause friction that would be troublesome for the township staff and would also be, you know, troublesome for me to say, no, no, that's just my in-laws or no, that was my teenagers being allowed and I'm sorry about that. Right? But I'd rather complaints be neighborly rather than having this system of escalation to the township really rapidly isn't, I think, an ideal situation.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Do you want me to blow their mind that I can do this?
Sure. I, Dan and then you. Yes, sorry, he, he got his hand up first.
I hate to blow out both of the departments.
Can you speak up, please?
I'm revoked in the park. I am curious, do what, why people that squat on property, does that fall under short-term rental also?
Squash.
People squatting on, on private property?
No. That's, that's, that, no.
What would they have that?
Because they're not paying anybody to live there. That's how, or to stay there. Like, that's, that's the definition of a short-term rental. Yeah.
Okay.
That's just squatting, trespassing.
Yeah, we go trespass.
Trespassing, yeah. Did you have anything else?
No.
Okay, go ahead, Dixie.
Okay. I went through the agenda packet and so I made comments on different sections. The first one was the proposed draft text for section 3.02, District R2. It said intent to provide for establishment and preservation of high-density, varied-to-use type of housing, including resort-related residence and enterprises in areas conducive to such use. I, my response to that is I do not want a TV home or a container home next to my home. I, as well as many others in the town, just can invest a substantial amount of money in our homes. We do not want the value of our homes to be decreased by a lot of neighbor friend character to change. Also, this type of home generates serious tax burden. And what does the term incentivize mean within your definition? In regards to short-term rentals, I went through the proposed draft, second reading, and I have some comments on that. Section 5.0 B1, why are air mattresses, air mattresses included in sleeping space? I would consider a air mattress as a temporary sleeping area. B4, why aren't children two years old and younger not counting towards the total number of guests? They still require a sleeping and dining area, just like we have in the first one we ran through. Something why? Notice to owners and occupants within 300 feet of the rental property. This distance needs to be more than 300 feet because sound travels over water. I know that I had a short-term rental near my home on Scott Lake with summer. It was further than 300 feet away, but with the music and everything else glaring, I heard it very clearly in my house. It was quite loud. It has quiet hours shall be observed between 10:00 and 8:00 AM. What is the definition of quiet? And now, quiet hours are 10:00 to 7:00, so they're not the same timeframe between the two sections. And then under service animals and pets, noise, excessive barking, or disturbances to neighbors is not allowed and may result in termination of the rental. I think the same rules should apply to people. It should say human disturbances to neighbors is not allowed in neighbors' resorts and termination of the rental. Under P, it says recreational vehicles and tents. Recreational vehicle is not permitted and a short-term rental properties, tents are limited to five consecutive days. My opinion, tents should not be allowed. That's temporary. That's not part of the short-term rental. And plus, on top of that, tents can go over the whole entire property. It's plural. And so you're having a lot more people and everything else there. Under section 6.0, I think the fines are too low. And, and it says the violation was done by someone who was renting. Renters tried to stop it. Then that would be an exception, and I think that this should not be an exception. If a violation is caused by someone not renting, the renter should call the local sheriff. Because otherwise, they'll say like, oh, no, that wasn't my renter that did that.
Thank you.
Can I ask, what was the first? What was the first?
3.02, that is the language of the current, this is our current language. For your, yeah, the, just, yeah, Dixie, that, that, this isn't changed or proposed language. This is the language of our ordinance.
I saw them winding through the first sentence.
No, this is it. This is, so she's, yeah, we'll talk about that in a second. Yeah.
And Dixie, what was your last name for the record?
A O V as in Victor, based in H. Were you referring to this? This one, this 3.02?
Yes.
Whatever's in the packet.
Yeah. The zoning ordinance is approved. Okay, ma'am, did you have a public comment?
Well, I represent one of the short-term vacation rentals that be managed.
Would you please give your name? Thank you.
John, John. I work for Freshwater Vacation Rentals.
Do you have a last name?
Sawicki.
Thank you.
S A W I C K I. So I'm new to all this and I just wanted to state that I hear the complaints. We have a lot of power as a property management company. We have over 160 properties all over Michigan. We have other communities that they have come with an ordinance with getting a permit and normally you can really work it out. Regarding quiet time, when I told the owner of the property to give our, we have a 24/7 number setting. We're not in business to upset neighbors or community. So, and it's actually worked where they called the number and we have the power to call the guests and we do. And if they don't quiet down, we do call the sheriff and we have him removed. We do have quiet time and we, we want the fact that we are enabling people in the community who are cleaners, are handyman, we're having them work. They're, they're in the area, they're spending money in the area, but we don't want to, don't want to create any animosity with the whole concept of short-term rentals because Michigan is a beautiful state. And while naturally the owner that I am representing, I guess, had gone to the township before she bought the house and they were allowed. And I really wish that if there weren't any complaints, they were relayed back to the owner, because they were, I'm unaware, because we do have the power to tighten up verbiage on our advertising. There's so many things we can do and they've worked. And I have neighbors come. I, I have, somebody has the phone every night. And I've had to reach out to a guest and say, you know, because sound travels over water. Very much so. And I hear your complaints, you know, but I've reached out to the guest and then I get a text from the neighbor saying thank you because they quiet down. Ninety-nine percent of people are good and just want to go on vacation. So I just want to say there is, there are rules that we would follow and, and we would enforce them as well with, with our guests. And we never had to have anybody removed by a sheriff, so I just wanted to just let you know that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
I just like to add, the properties that he's referring to, I'd like to know if they're zone this commercial or residential.
No, they're not.
They're being run by, this could be commercialized.
Are there any other public comments? There'll be another chance for public comment at the end of the meeting as well. Okay, so we're ready to go into the main meeting. Old business. Number one on our agenda is an, an issue we've been talking about for a couple of months. And our discussion might be impacted by the fact that we're now, we're talking about the zoning ordinance as a whole. But Tasha, I'm going to let you take the floor and let us.
Yeah, so I found this to be more difficult actually doing it than it sounded in my head, moving it from one spot to another. And kind of breathing through it, it just seemed to be more complicated and more cumbersome. And then I kept thinking, you know, if we do redo the whole zoning ordinance, should we just wait? And then I have more questions and more things as I was working on this. So that kind of became way more cumbersome than what I wanted it to.
And for everyone here, why, just maybe, let the public know what it is, the overall thing you're trying to achieve with the setback.
So, in a county ordinance, are, the setbacks are in a totally different section than the district. So I wanted to put the setbacks in the district like most townships, so you don't have to keep going to four different sections, put them all together in the district, what the setbacks were.
So it's just how the ordinance is organized. It's not subject to change.
Moving the same text from one spot to another, making simple grammatical changes, but not any, like, specific setback changes. So kind of reorganizing the language, but it's the same content, just in a different spots. There were a few things that I kind of did a deeper dive in the R1 district, kind of, that was the first one that we had. But the other ones, I basically just cut and pasted all of the, the ordinance. And then I kind of got to, well, some of them have lakes, so then I had to put the lake setbacks in there and then you have the front setback and then you have, if you have a garage, there's a different setback, so the formatting of it, I kind of got stuck on that, so I kind of just pointed it instead of doing the actual formatting. But then I just had more questions and thoughts as I was going through it, so and then I just wasn't sure if we should kind of go in or if we should maybe wait. Because there are things that need to be changed, so there would be some decisions that would need to be made of changing of these things. So, but.
Do you have any questions? Anybody? Ken, Dave? Jay, Frank, what do you think?
It was just kind of a formatting nightmare that I kind of ran into and and the current language is the problem, so kind of found moving that language to here and I wanted to just change it all because it doesn't make any sense, so, so then I kind of just stopped.
So, do you, do you have an opinion on whether we work on this or not?
If we're going to go forward with Williams and Works.
Yeah.
We might as well just do that.
And I'm not opposed to that. I mean, we're functioning with it right now. It's, sometimes it's a when we're on the wake, some of those, that's a little hard to decipher, but for the most part, you know.
We're used to it at least.
I'm used to, correct. So I know where to go and what the language says and then there's these few other weird setbacks in, like, the non-conforming section that are really bizarre, that really don't make any sense.
Okay.
At one time, we had a spreadsheet.
Yeah, so if you have like a 50-foot wide lot, then your setbacks are less. And then it goes a foot more up to 100 feet. Yeah.
Kind of hard to follow. Yeah.
Correct. Very hard to follow, yes. But if you're going to have a setback, you have a setback. You don't keep scaling it. You pick something and then that's, you just so, so I kind of just, I did put it in here so you can kind of see what it might look like, but then if we do end up going through the whole ordinance, then.
We'll be doing it anyway.
Correct. So that would just be more work when somebody else can actually format it more proper than I could figure that out, so.
Perfect.
Yeah, take the repetition out of it, you know, and make it usable.
Do we wait and just, if we have that conversation about the zoning ordinance as a whole? What do you think, Jay?
Yeah.
You comfortable with that?
Yeah.
And Ken, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I, I was just trying to say that I can remember back when they had a spreadsheet
Yeah.
with R1 that said 1200 square feet and then it would say, you know, the lake, lake front and that thing went down and that was a cheat sheet for Elizabeth somebody.
Yep. Yep.
Was that, do you have that? I mean.
I don't, I don't have that, no.
Would that be better?
But that is very, it's very popular in new zoning ordinances, though, the chart. Basically, they take all the data and they put it in a chart and you can kind of quickly review it and then you go to the district and then all the words are in the district.
What about just creating a chart like that as an addendum? So that your changes don't have to pay right away.
Time than I do, so.
I, I think, I, I think I have one.
Okay.
I just have to go back to my old files and pull it out. It, it, it's back in the eighties, if not before.
So it's not current. It's just a form, maybe it's the format we can use.
It, it has everything pretty much except for the overlay district for the.
I think even if you have the spreadsheet, there's still so many variables because there are planted lots on public roads, there are unplanted lots on private roads. And I kind of thought about.
They were listed in there as A, B, and C, you know, depending what you have.
Maybe eliminating that, but I think we have so many of them that I think we kind of need to keep those in there. I think the setback numbers need to be changed. I don't think they're make any sense, but.
Tasha, how does your recommendations dovetail with what Williams and Work said on the subject?
Well, they, you know, they definitely said that there, that there's formatting issues and, yeah, there's the wording, so most ordinances, when you get to the setbacks, it just says 50 feet. Where your ordinance says, when the promise upon a highway under the jurisdiction of the Michigan State shall be 110 feet, maintained between the center line, you don't need all that. That just, you don't need any of that.
We don't have a state road.
So.
Supposed to be the frontline anyway.
110 feet from the center line.
Supposed to be the frontline, I'm reading, yeah.
Yeah, as an example, like, you don't need three paragraphs to say the front setback is 50 feet from the right, as an example.
Okay, all right. So I don't want to belabor this unless, unless there's something specific you want to say about setbacks or do, we can continue this when we get into zoning, if that makes sense. I also don't want to hurry you. So, do, do you feel like you said what you wanted to say?
I, yes. I just, basically, after I started doing it, it just became, it was more of a project than what I thought it would be to just go cut and paste it and put it in over here and then I found that it was just a little bit more, I mean, I don't mind finishing it, but if we're going to have somebody else redo the ordinance, then it's kind of silly for me to put all the work into it.
Okay.
If we're just going to have a redo.
Okay.
So that's.
So I don't know if we need to do a motion on this or not.
Think so.
Did we?
If you decide to not rewrite the whole ordinance.
Then we need to come back to it.
Then I would like to come back to it and then.
Okay, so why don't we revisit it after we have that discussion later in the agenda?
Yeah, so I kind of started the work a little bit, but
Okay.
a, a deeper dive would need to be done to, to really get into it.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything else for Tasha? Okay. Quick update on the next agenda item, which is the continuing work of the Parks Committee. The only thing to report there is we're continuing to meet and we're currently, each of us, working with five-year plans and we're putting our thoughts together on five-year plans. The township doesn't have any money to put into a park and we know that as we're going into this planning. But we need to do the planning and we need to do it in a very specific way in order to be eligible for possibly grants someday. So we're trying to get the township set up for that. And we're also going to try crowdfunding. It may not work, but we're going to try. There is some, there is some enthusiasm, though, about taking these 11 acres back here and doing something with it for the benefit of the township as a whole. So it's going very well. We've actually added two more members to our committee this week. Any questions? Okay, so then zoning and blight, zoning and blight compliance spreadsheet. There have been no updates to the spreadsheet since I last gave it to the board for their meeting, so I don't have anything else to say other than I know it's frustrating, things are not moving as quickly as they need to. Do you guys have any comments on that? That nothing has changed on the spreadsheet for over a month. And some of the things on the spreadsheet have dates of April. And there's no follow-up. So my worry is, and, and Ken and I have been talking about this for months, trying to, you know, and we put this process together for a reason. And the idea is, let's, let's get this process in place and let's, let's give it two or three months. And the idea is that a complaint comes into, we'll get to you. The idea is that a complaint, a complaint comes into the township. It's investigated by either trustee Gruss or possibly Tasha. And usually Gary looks at it first and then decides that Tasha needs to look at it. I think Tasha's got a little stacked up here with a bunch of work. And Jeremy's also supposed to be letting me know if he's doing any work. And I, maybe he is, but I'm, I've had no updates from Gary or Tasha or Jeremy for a month. And, and I know everybody's busy. So, but this township wants to deal with blights, so we need to know if this isn't working, you know, let's hear, you know, what do we need to do differently? Because people are getting upset.
Well, I like the process. Are you? Well, I like the process, are you, what, do you mind if I?
I would love to hear what you have to say.
So it's from. Some of it is going from nothing to now having something, so there's kind of always that transition. And it has been an exceptionally busy building season. Which really is an excuse, it's just. Getting it into my. Uh, whatever word I'm looking at, daily. To do, whatever word I'm looking for.
Schedule.
Schedule, there you go, thank you, yes, where it wasn't, it wasn't, and that wasn't the thing. And I just, it just needs to get in there, so we're starting to have a little lull, so it's. It's.
I still need to ask the question, do you need help and, and, and if you do, what would that look like? Do you need an assistant? Do you need a zoning enforcement officer? I mean, I'm beginning to think that we do. Um, we actually need to pay someone who shows up and has to, you know.
That would be.
Pay a certain, you know, work a couple of hours a, a week. Um, and follows through so that, cause we've already established that you never go on the property in your role as zoning administrator, whoever goes on property. Probably has to be armed.
I choose to not, but I. Most of, most of all the enforcement that I could or would do, I would just do from the street or take the photos that Gary has sent me to me or.
So I need you guys to wing in on this, you've seen the chart for the last three or four months, what do you think?
Help needed, yeah, for sure, cause we can't enforce anything, this is just a, just a, it's just keeping on rolling.
Uh, can you manage something like that if you had a body that you could, uh, like a temp for them?
We have actually hired a third person in our office. So that has kind of started to lead me a little bit from my desk, so part of it was that, so. We're, yes, and now this.
So we should, we should give this a little time.
If you don't mind giving me a little bit more time to.
What do you think is reasonable?
No, I, I, I'm glad you're gonna need someone to help you, I, I see you being overloaded.
What, what would be reasonable, but, but seriously, I'm not, I'm not trying to be.
Now that it's, you know. We're turning, it's slowing down, I mean, a month or two.
And what do you guys think about that? You alright with that?
I would also be very willing to suggest we hire a, a blight enforcer officer or something.
Part-time sheriff.
That's, that's what I think.
Gary, you're an enforcement officer?
Yeah, but I mean, how much can you put on Gary?
And he's volunteering, yeah.
That's the best guy, you don't have to pay no money, he should.
I, I think there's a conversation, we also need a Gary and, uh, you, me, Gary and the deputy sheriff and, and you sit down again and. But let's give you a month, two months and then we'll get the group back together to see how we're doing and. She would improve us, we, we might make and see where we're going, I mean, we're dumping.
She's a blight person.
No, she's not. What is it, Karen?
It was earlier, you made a comment about there have been no changes or something.
There haven't been for a month.
They may not have been reported to you, but what I can tell you is, I know that Gary is actively looking at things. And. I think he's sending pictures to Tasha and I believe he just put somebody on a. Notice, he's about ready to pull a camper from somewhere, so there are things happening. If it isn't going through the process, that's another, maybe it's time to have a meeting with you guys. But it would not be correct to say that nothing's happened.
That is correct, that this, that I have not been able to update the sheet for over a month. Cause I have not received any information from anyone on the committee about updates and I'm not trying to be a jerk. I'm just, the way that we get this to move forward is we just have to be accountable. And we start, and, 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 and also, we need to find out, do we need help, that's always been a real question that we had, we never. Really expected this to work perfectly, we're, we're trying to see where the problem is so we can solve it, yeah. Dixie.
Um, you know, like on this list, it says that dangerous building and unsold condition violation letter. Over fifteen days to respond, you expect these owners to respond in fifteen days. Whatever the procedure is, this board or whomever it is responsible for it should be following a, a merit too.
We don't, it, it's a zoning issue, that, at this point.
These people have cleaned up their property and you've given them a timeline, there, we can't. In my opinion, we cannot relax and we have to follow the procedure too. If you expect the taxpayer to follow the procedure.
It's been going on for years, this is not a new problem, it's been going on for years, I'm new. I've only been in this for three months and one of the first things that I've done is to put a spreadsheet together, cause I believe in process, if you don't have a process. You can't get a problem solved, so here we are, three months into it, nothing's been solved, we do have a database. You wanna give it another month or two?
I would like to.
Let's just say January, get through the holidays, okay? Are you guys comfortable with that? Um, do we wanna do anything in the meantime about even looking for something like a part-time help or do you wanna just wait?
I, I really think that committee needs to get together and talk and see, we might have a ton of stuff that they've done that we don't even know about.
But then that's a problem.
I'm worried about some of these dangerous buildings and are, are we making any progress on that?
So I had, um, I have sent out one letter. And that's kind of another. Problem with the process is that. I also had him go out and he's been not giving me the information and then I asked.
Who's he?
The building inspector.
Okay. Two, two, two months, two months will be, and will.
From not doing it and now fitting it into the schedule. Just one of those, you know, next, you know, things and.
Is there anything we can do?
Feel like the process of the spreadsheet and having. That is. That's great, yes.
Good, okay, and there's nothing right now that you, we can do to be helpful?
I, I just need to, you know, get to the list and get the letters out.
So January.
I still have about thirty or I'm setting.
Yeah, so, yes, we now have. I hired someone over the summer, that person didn't work out, so then I had to start all over and I think the new person that we know is good.
Good. Okay, is there anything else on that before we move on? Alright, the next thing I wanna do is, uh, show you a, um. Quick video. Uh, about, it's about sixteen minutes on short-term rentals. That I think will help you. Appreciate. Kind of the macro. The macro situation, uh, these are people that sell software to track software, to, to track short-term rentals. We probably can't afford the software, but they're experts in short-term rentals and they have a lot to say. Uh, just about what local governments need to be thinking about when they look at short-term rental regulations. So, um, I thought it was a good place. To continue, to start with this and, and then we'll go into the actual draft itself after that. Um, do you guys, you haven't seen it, so you, we should sit over there, we should sit, yeah, we, you, you, I don't know that you.
I can see it well enough.
I want you guys to be able to. Do we need the lights off or? I think it's okay, oh. You need my mouse?
No, okay, no, it's just.
Mode access, is that it?
Hang on, oh, wait, that's.
It showed up, yeah.
Movie night, popcorn?
And you, and when you get to the video, Jay, you can actually move ahead, the, the, you can skip over the first five, four minutes. Cause it's all a bunch of introductions and just to save everybody's time. Um, if you can get to the four minute mark. And turn up the volume. And then we, and it really is about sixteen minutes total.
Here we go.
We will email a recording of this presentation within eight hours. Please use this point. And then our team. Are coming. Your attention to a couple very specific ones.
Take four minutes?
Yeah, go to minute four and then.
So, to start out with, um, we wanted to talk a little bit.
Can you hear everything or louder?
You can hear?
Obviously, you're already aware of, but some of the, the key challenges that this explosion of. The short-term rental market is presenting to local governments. Um, we'll go off, go, go through all of these, but I do wanna call your attention to a couple very specific ones. Um, we've seen over the last decade in. Treat the, the growth in the short-term rental market has clearly out. The, the resources available to understand what is happening, the trends in impact on communities as a whole. Um, we've also seen the evolution of going to the forefront is the, the ordinance development. And how you think through all of the different key considerations, which will cover many today. Um, but the, the, the accuracy and evolution of those ordinances as it pertains to short-term rentals and hotel and occupancy taxes. And the related trends that the short-term rental market is having on communities, not only the community health, but also the revenue. Um, that is, that is associated with them. We've also identified in today's discussion, the impact it's had on public services is a really important aspect. Of the key considerations and how you draft ordinances, the demand, the inbound compliance-related aspects that short-term rentals. Present to governments that don't necessarily have the resources that are adequately applied to the short-term rentals only. But the impact it's having on police, medical and fire. And then also I talked about a little bit and I'm gonna cover here in just a second again, the uncaught potential revenue. That is associated with the shift in traditional hotel phase to the, uh, to, to short-term rentals as a whole. So with that, um, wanna talk a little bit about what, what does that, what does it mean in terms of explosion, so. What we have on the screen here is, obviously, we're all well aware of the VRBOs and booking.com and Airbnbs the world. But the reality is, there are hundreds of platforms that are in existence today and coming online. On a weekly, bi-weekly, monthly, quarterly basis that are adding to the available options that short-term rentals say. Stayers for short-term rental, um, um. People are engaging with to book their stays. Um, and in reality, there's over ten thousand aggregators and affiliate websites and local listing sites and pocket listings, as we call it. That are set up on a, 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 a regimented basis to avoid some of the major booking platforms. We'll talk about a little bit today, the voluntary collection agreements, which some of you may have in place. That do pertain to some of the major platforms, but the reality is manual monitoring is not scalable. And with hundreds of platforms, over ten thousand aggregators and affiliates out there. It's become an issue for governments to monitor and identify and understand the landscape and the impact that it's having. On their jurisdictions as short-term rental stayers are traditionally shifting from the traditional hotel occupancy. So a couple statistics here, um, we'll go through all these again, but explosion in the market really pertains to this slide. You've seen over fifteen hundred percent increase in wheelhouse and it's only getting larger, bottom hand, bottom left side of your screen. Expected to grow to over four hundred and eighty billion, these are relevant and up-to-date statistics, four hundred and eighty billion industry-wide by twenty thirty-nine. Average nightly rates are growing at a crazy clip at over twenty-five percent, two hundred and forty-three dollars a night. I've talked a little bit about the bottom right, twenty-seven percent. Global markets have seen home rentals outperform hotels. How do you understand that shift introductory and how do you account for the volume that is shifting from traditional hotels? To the short-term rentals and have the right compliance strategies in place, but also have the relevant technology that you can. Apply to those trends to make sure you're collecting on the tax revenue associated with them. So with that, um, what does that mean for communities? So it's not just a revenue play, it's a community aspect as well. Some of the impacts that we've seen in the experiences in our partnerships is. Immense, immense impact having on the communities themselves, noise and public safety, damage to neighboring households and, and properties. Impact, a big one here, and George will cover this, the impact it's having on the affordable housing market. And I mentioned a little bit, the drain on community service and resources, so do you have, the question really becomes. Do you have an infrastructure in place, understand the activity and act on that activity with a well-thought-through and thorough ordinance? And also be able to collect on that revenue to mitigate some of these impacts that short-term rentals are having on your particular community. So when we talk about ordinances, what does that mean? We found that, uh, governments of all sizes are relatively in a different journey. In regard to their ordinance development, some are in a no regulation, no permit. Minimal requirements, trying to figure out how to either iterate on a past legacy ordinance. Or also develop one from scratch, what does that look like? What do we need to consider? What are the things that we need to highlight in our organs? We see a lot of governments in the middle, um, here you see a balanced and more mature approach where some form. Of an ordinance is in place, many ordinances are, uh, iterated on one or two times at this point. But the problem here is that many struggle with effective enforcement of that ordinance due to the lack of access to technology. And standardization of processes. And then lastly, on the right side, you see very high maturity here, tight controls, robust ordinances. Widespread use of technology and utilization of data to drive the decision-making process. This obviously on the right side is where we all aspire to be, but this, this leads to effective enforcement and ultimately collection of that tax. Before passing to George here, I wanna start at the beginning and what I mean by start at the beginning is. If you're in the low or moderate range of ordinance maturity. It's really important that you truly and fundamentally define what a short-term rental is and what that means to your particular community. And the trends associated with where you're located, um, it's different everywhere, um, it is. The defining elements of what a short-term rental may be can be a surprise to some, we've only listed a couple here. But these are just some of the very specific ways that different jurisdictions of all sizes actually define what that means. And then you apply your ordinance and your compliance-related strategies to that definition. While going through all the key considerations that George is about to cover and then you move in, in your journey to be holding their by. Maturity organization and agency to where you have fundamental processes in place that you can then apply technology to maximize not only compliance. But also regulation and revenue collection, so with that, George, uh, I will pass it to you. And there's so many key considerations we wanna talk about today, but George, George.
Sure, thank you Brennan and very good to see you, you're a legend in our industry and I appreciate you being here to moderate this. I am coming here from Fort Lauderdale, uh, Florida and, uh, when I was city manager here twenty years ago is when. The Airbnb, a Verbo thing just started and so things have come a long way in twenty years, as you could see from Brennan's numbers. Many of you get asked this question, can't we just ban these things? And in some places you can, in some places you can't, and in some places you can do something in between. The key here is, is when you say can you ban them, what do you really mean by ban? Is it, you don't want any at all, you don't want them in residential zones or commercial zones, you don't wanna see one anywhere within your jurisdiction? Or is there a certain, certain types that you wanna ban, so. In some places they're talking about banning them in residential areas, some places they, they're okay with them in commercial. In some places is, you know, the, the spring break areas and the prom areas, they don't, they don't want eighteen-year-olds or twenty-one-year-olds being able to book. In some cases, it's they don't want them near school zones or they don't necessarily want. To undermine their affordable housing program, so in some communities they go ahead and they allow for. Uh, AUDs and, uh, all of a sudden. Uh, ADUs and, uh, all of a sudden, they're doing Airbnbs and, uh, afford, uh, units that were meant to be affordable housing. Units, so are you undermining, uh, your affordable housing and it's. Oh, is there, is that, uh, do? Some places it's historic districts, other places it's about the subletting, do you really want? A renter to those units and one thing that some haven't considered but become problems over time is. Whether you want to be able to have a home with, let's say, three or four bedrooms and each one be a separate. A listing, so that now you have multiple bookings within one structure, so more like a boarding home type activity. And so these are the types of bans that communities all over the country have been talking about. Some of them have been limited by state preemption, uh, Florida, it would be a good example of that. Uh, in some cases, it's limited preemption and in some cases they can ban anything that they like, so it really depends on your jurisdiction. So first is, what do you wanna allow within your community and then assuming. And then assuming you adopt some type of best practice program. Generally, most of the programs involve some sort of a registration process. And here on the slide is somewhat of what you, most communities are doing in one form or another. And uh, this in includes, of course, questions about whether do you, before you issue the registration of the license, whether you want city staff, county staff to go and inspect the properties, how many departments should be involved in this process? What kind of proof of ownership do you need for this kind of thing? And so in some communities, it's a sheet of paper with your name and address. And in other places, they want a parking plan and a site plan and a trash plan, and they want notarized this and notarized that. All kinds of certificates, so it really depends uh on the requirements. Uh, the type of regulations that communities have a flavor for.
George, uh, let me jump in real quick, uh, with a question for both of you. Uh, you both worked with dozens of local governments, so some of the most common mistakes cities make when trying to manage short term rentals for the first time.
Harry, we'll start this and circle this, because I would say that this is the biggest mistake that communities make, particularly the large cities is or they take on, they bite off more than they can choose. So they think about all the things that they want to protect the community and all kinds of requirements that they include in the registration process and involving multiple departments and onsite inspections. The next thing you know, they open the floodgates, people start to register, apply for licenses, and the next thing you know, they can't handle the vibe. They just don't have the bandwidth to deal with it. And then they get clawed, and then they start getting negative feedback from uh the users.
Yeah, and I would, I would agree, Harry. I think it's it's the the comprehensiveness too fast, too soon, without having one the ability to execute those particular inputs in regard to the ordinance, whether it be permitting or registration on the front end or also the compliance related strategy. If you have too many specific things in your ordinance that says they can't do this thing or these things, do you have the ability to enforce that? Do you have the staff? And at the end of the day, we'll talk about this at the end, do you have the technology to even have the insight into being able to monitor and understand how to apply that particular robust type of ordinance? So it's it's understanding where you are in your journey, what do you have as a support mechanism and and ability to enforce it? But also, do you have the right technology in place to actually take action on it as well?
Yeah, and so the two close seconds where I agree with Brennan and I is number one, uh, make sure you have the technology that to to handle and administer your programs. But secondly, make sure you check with your lawyers, because in a lot of cases, the electeds get caught up in the political drama on these issues. And sometimes they take on too much and then they get caught up in court and it's all kinds of legal expenses. And then in many cases, their ordinances are struck down because they either ignored their legal advice or didn't want to hear their legal advice or tried to do yoga law in order to get to where they wanted to be and the courts strike them down. So got to be really careful with that. And then I I another big category here, I'd say with a regulation is controlling your, I call it controlling your your population, because ultimately, when you talk about the things that Brennan talked about, whether it's trash or traffic or parking issues, noise, it really comes down to how many visitors are you having coming into your jurisdiction? And so that's why many uh feel like caps are an appropriate way to go. Whether it's a cap within a community, a neighborhood, within a a a certain district, residential zones. But allowing only a certain amount in certain areas would be one way to control your population. Another certainly is the occupancies it allows to control. Obviously, how many guests you can allow in a particular structure is a big issue for many communities. And also defining what a bedroom is, because if you don't have a a a distinction what a bedroom is, they'll put cots in hallways, they'll put cots in basements, they'll put uh uh mattresses wherever they can find them, and you'll end up with way way over what you expect, and we have proof of that, we see it all the time. So making sure everybody understands what a bedroom is. And then with taxes and fees, obviously, the higher the expenses are for the owners, that can also limit the amount of uh uh people who want to go into that business. I have this list here, which uh, you know, we'll talk a little bit about uh the the toolkit, but I would just say there's a whole lot of things you can do to minimize and protect the neighborhood, minimize the uh the disruptions in the neighborhood. Some of them are more doable than others, but there are plenty of things, and it's a menu. And and I would suggest that some of them are more important than others, but some of them are biting. And then the same thing would be um issues is lighting and good neighbor policies. I'll pull, I'll pull that one out, is making sure that the guests understand what the expected behavior is, because in many cases, the owners, when this thing works right, the owners want their guests to behave well, and their guests behave well because they um they know exactly what their the expectations are and somebody has made it clear to them. And then this would be, in my opinion, one of the most important things is making sure that you don't end up where you got a call tomorrow and people burned up in a house. And those who don't think that SDRs catch fire, I can promise you, SDRs catch fire. Catch fire all over the place. And uh, and and sometimes people can get hurt that way. So you really want to make sure that you have protections in place. And then finally, with um some jurisdictions, you have to ask yourself the question, what's the benefit of these? And in most cases, it's their economy and revenue. And so if people are going to come into your community and use their services, you just want to make sure that they're paying their fair share of the usage of the community. And lastly, uh, we have probably two hundred items in this uh toolkit, which we're happy to send to you, uh, and Brennan and I co-authored a book called Post Nation, which is about two hundred page book. About every ordinance you can find in the country and with all these issues and more. But for free, we're happy to send this toolkit out to anybody who wants it.
Okay, so that's the substantive part of the video. So I hope you found that kind of helpful. I I thought it was well done and um. You know, it does get political, it does get emotional. If you have a house on Saddle Lake and somebody is living next to you, you're emotional about that. Everybody's got a different point of view. As local government, we've got to look at this very broadly from lots of different perspectives, and I just thought maybe that would help. Let's all realize that there's lots of perspectives to consider here, not just one. So with that, um. Thank you. Does the, do any of you have a comment on the video, anything before we get into the ordinance itself, or we can jump right into it? And tell me what your thoughts are on the second draft and the idea of short term rental and what you heard in the video. Where are we?
There's a lot said about Gavin Business and Residential. Would, I mean, he hit so many points about looking right at the mirror. About not being able to enforce anything. You got too much written. I mean.
It was very clear, if you're going to start, start small and know that you can enforce it.
And no, he did, I mean, those are, those are key.
That was clear.
That was really clear.
Yeah, it was clear.
And there was a lot of negatives.
Other thoughts?
I don't know, I read through the thing and it's like, how in the world are you going to enforce this, enforce anything? And I was reading this stuff about how many people can be in the lake at one time? And who's going to complain about that and who's going to enforce that? And I know for a fact that the sheriff will not come out. They do not enforce the league stuff. Maybe we can browbeat our guy into doing it. But I've talked to the supervisor, one of the supervisors of the sheriff department. And he made it very clear to me, we do not enforce the only ordinances. That's not their job. Though to think that in the middle of the night, if there's noise, they're going to call the cops, they're not going to come out.
Amazing.
Well, I I I had rentals for thirty years, I'm not sure I should be uh into the depth on this, but I think you have to. And I'll just basically go over some of the things they said there is. You got overuse of the lakes, you're seeing an increase in these arise. Uh, I don't think we have the police uh support. I think our fire department's weak. I know our ambulance is way too far to be able to provide uh fire protection or ambulance service. Uh, we only have one gas station, one restaurant, one family dollar, and one auto repair place in our township, which but they're going to have to be going into a bigger town to get any of their food or things or bring a lot. Uh, we already have overuse of some of the lakes in our township. We um we get paid revenue based on population. How many people live in our township, not on how many people come to our township. Fifty one percent of our township is owned by people that don't live in our township. Eighty percent of our land is rural farming area, it's not residential. The only residential we really have is around the lakes. And we have some stuff in Grand Junction. Of course, Breedville is not part of Columbia Township, but we don't have the we don't have that. Um, my perspective over the thirty years of running, when my runners come to my property, they don't know crap about lakes. They don't know how to drive on it. They don't know what a boat is or how to run it. They don't know what direction to go. And then they'll go out, they'll get close to fishermen, they'll get up close to another boat, they'll run into somebody's dock. I mean, uh, jet skis don't stop, they don't know that. South Haven sends all the jet seats to Saddle Lake. You want to run a jet ski, I got to pad out today, but go to Saddle Lake. So now we have our public access. If you go over there in the summertime, especially on holiday weekends, it's packed, they're parked out on the road. I said enough. They did say bite off more than we can handle. As we're doing the blight and that, we're biting off more than we can handle. And I just think that thirty years, I did this, in thirty years, I had a couple of problems. But now we have all this influx and all I'm hearing is complaints from neighbors of these places, though. Noise, taking over their beach, being in front of their beach where they can't use it on holidays, that they don't know what they're doing in the lake. And I don't know what the answer is to all that. But and it's not, I'm not saying anything about your ordinance or how your ordinance is written. I'm just stating that and my experience in thirty years.
First of all, it's not my ordinance, it it started.
Well, I know, sorry, sorry. I I I I originated the order wrong. Uh, after they buy the samples and try to put them together, we'll first the township. We sent that to the township attorney, they came back with revisions to it, and then Kate, Kate looked at that and she wanted to make it better by using the AI process to make it better. She has reduced it from the seven pages to four, five.
Well, yeah, so I'll finish, but thanks. So I use plain language um so that you can understand the zoning ordinance, which in favor, I'm in general in favor of moving all of our zoning ordinance to plain language. Um, but but then we've had a meeting with neighbors, uh, people that are against short term rentals, people that are for, we've had several comments. So all of that's been taken into consideration, um, and and that's where the draft is at.
And another thing, at the last township board meeting, the township board asked that we look at this video and take this video and some of the things in the video and try to put it in our short term.
Which is, I mean, if you look at the video, if you if you look at their checklist, we actually have done that. Um, but I think the big takeaway from the video, the the big one for me, and it's been in my brain the whole time I've been working on this and researching it, is if we do whatever we do, we have to be prepared for the consequence of that. So um, you know, we can do nothing. We can try to ban, and we can try to have a short term ordinance. They all have consequences, there's no, there's no perfect answer here. Um, the question in my mind, what's the best thing for the township? Um, I I think is really the question that we have to ask ourselves, and I don't have an easy answer to that. I I think there's, I I'm I'm on the side that if we're going to have an ordinance, we have to be able to enforce it. Um, that's kind of where I'm at. Um, I I I do want to point you to your maps for just a minute, this is a good time to bring it up. I gave you all um the current, look at your um official zoning map. And and here's what troubles me the most. If you look around the lakes, that light yellow for the official zoning map, that's R two residential resort, it is not residential. And that is a different definition than plain residential. We don't have any short term rentals in our purely residential neighborhoods, we don't. All of our short term rentals are around the lakes and residential resort. And um, I have some concerns about that if we ban. Um, I think we'll get pushback on that. Um, and and I think as a township, if that's what we decide to do, then I think we have to realize that there's there's possibly going to be some legal consequences.
Do you know the difference between the brown and the yellow?
Yeah, the old plats are brown.
Do you know the difference of why the yellow or the yellow?
Why don't you tell me?
Yellow is an actual deeded piece of property by description, it's not in a parcel with a lot.
Okay.
That's the difference of them, and they bought a lake shore.
And they're called residential resort, and if you go to our zoning.
Residential resort, where they did that change to the map, the move them over.
And if you go to the definition of residential resort, Tasha actually gave it to us in her CEFAT ordinance. It's it's to provide for the, this is our ordinance. Our current ordinance for the lakes. To provide for the establishment and preservation of higher density, varied use type of housing, including resort related residences and enterprises in areas conducive to such use. This is our language. So I just think that if you're going to ban them, I think we have to very, have a very mature understanding of, you know, whatever we do, we do nothing, we do an ordinance or we ban them, whatever we do. I don't think it's the end, I think it's, I think we're in for a fight. So I, we have to be honest about, you know, what what benefits the township, if anything? Um, what are the, what are the risks, what are the, what are the benefits? And and what is the approach that we want to take? But it's it's simply an error to say that the properties around the lake are zoned residential, they are called residential resort. And there are some towns like Muskegon and um, I think Pierre Marquette Township that have used the word residential resort to accommodate short term rentals. I'm not arguing for short term rentals, I am saying with a legal background, I think you have a language problem in your ordinance. I could see.
I think we have in our ordinance, we have a permitted use section that says single family dwelling. When it says single family dwelling, that is the only permitted use. You do not have anything in our zoning ordinance that says that you can have short term rent. Transient, transient is only tied in our ordinance to motels, less than thirty days.
Three point oh two, R two speaks specifically about seasonal use, it just does.
What's a permitted use?
It's a seasonal use.
What is permitted use?
You can have single family. You can have multiple family dwellings as well, you can have both in R two.
You could have a.
You can get the higher density and just and 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 this, the Airbnb is our single family dwellings. So so a-again, I'm not arguing, and I don't, I don't want to argue. I I just, I don't think it's as easy as some of you think. There's no easy answer here. We have to be very careful about what we do, because whatever we do, if we do nothing, we, you know, anyway, I've said enough, what do you have to say?
Well, you see the rate, it's 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 getting out of control.
It is.
Well, then why are we trying to cap it right now?
Um, the issue with capping, I'm I'm actually, the issue with camping is that I think if we were to do a short term rental ordinance and did a cap right away, I think we'd be biting off more than we can chew. I think it falls into the, I think we should cap, but I don't think you do it till the second year. You give it, you give that first because we're a small township, we're worried about enforcement. If we do anything at all, I think the first year would be just to get a certification process going, and then the second year cap.
Did you see the percentage of increase in the year? I mean, they were crazy, they were crazy.
What do you think?
Um, I was going to ask, I didn't see caps in in here, is that why?
Yeah.
That would be added in the second year.
Yes, and and based on my research, if we if we were going to, A, were we going to pass an ordinance? And B, do we want to move to a cap? Um, the reason that the language says for a first year certification process, only one owner per prop, per Airbnb, you can only own one Airbnb in the entire township. You can't own more than one. The it, that's to anticipate a cap. So that, let's just say eventually our cap is thirty, just to pick a number. Um, I'm I'm anticipating, but I don't know, that that we wouldn't want multiple, one owner owning ten of them. I mean, is that what we would want? I don't know, but most, most communities don't, so that's why I wrote it that way. We can change it. We can change it, but that's why it's in there. So so that if we, if we move forward that first year. If the owner has five properties, he or she can only register one. And then at the following year, there would be a cap. And we would have a better idea of what that cap might be, having been through the process at least once.
And then it would get to the point where we would say. No more new short-term rentals can be set up in the township.
Right, that's it. If if some go away, then then.
Then you can fill that slot.
Yeah, but the problem with these these um, caps is if you get more applications, then you have slots. Now you have to have a lottery. It's just complicated. It's more than we are at all willing to take or able to take on that first year. What else from the commission?
So you said you met with members of the community, pro and against?
Ken and I did, yes, yeah.
What were your conclusions after that? What were your feelings?
Uh, they're reflected in the draft. Yeah. I listened to the folks that, you know, there are some that just don't want them at all. Okay, all right, so. But then there are some that say, well, if I'm gonna have them, at least take care of these problems. So we tried to listen to. And the problems and they're listed on the slides that were in that, in that video. The problems are pretty common, noise, trash, parking. Occupancy, um, all, they're all the same. We've kind of tried to address those, but at the end of the day, the township has to decide. You know, doesn't want to do this. And it's not even our decision. We're just being asked to draft the ordinance. What else from the commission? Anything?
So, all we do is draft the ordinance. It's up to the trustees to decide whether they're doing it.
That's correct, yeah.
Can we give the trustees a recommendation?
We sure can.
I would like to recommend all trustees that that we deny short-term rentals in the community.
Okay, does anyone want to second that?
Is that permanent?
Yeah. Yeah.
There's a second?
I'll second it.
We'll take a vote. Ken?
Oh, I I think I have an appearance of a conflict of interest. I don't believe I can actually vote on this matter.
Um, the vote yes that we ban then.
They vote no?
Yes.
No.
So it's fifty-fifty. I just don't think we have enough information to ban. I I'm just sure we'll have a lawsuit and I'm not really thrilled with the idea of. The township paying for lawsuits so the people on the lake can have their private lakes. I just, something about that doesn't feel right to me.
I think we're gonna have a lawsuit regardless.
We may, but which, you know, we may, but um.
But this income that for this, we're not getting any.
I I think the township board has asked you to review that video and provide them with an ordinance. I think what you ought to do is just. Vote to send it back to the township with no recommendation.
Well, we just had a motion fifty fifty, um, so we were, no decision was made on. Yeah, there's no recommendation. Um. Do we have any other questions on the ordinance itself, any language? That you wanna talk about, anything you don't understand?
I understood it. I thought it was so specific. There's no way in the world anybody's gonna be able to enforce it. It's too much. And a lot of things are legitimate. But you're gonna need a full-time person just to enforce this. In the middle of the night when something goes wrong, the sheriff's not gonna come out unless it's a murder.
My thinking was we hire a zoning enforcement officer and that same person picks up light and works on short-term rentals. But that was my thinking. I I think we're gonna have to hire somebody and and this would be a, these are two part-time jobs. Yeah.
Um, I have a couple of comments. If by chance you're sending this back to the board. I think that the short-term rentals are a commercial business and they should be able to pay a fee. They will cover all of the aspects that go along with it, with the zoning amount. They lose their um. Property tax exemption because of commercial businesses. Um, there, there's a lot they should. Um, the state of Michigan flexs use tax on them, but Columbia Township flex use tax on them also. In order to make sure that all the other residents who have full-time houses here are not um. Not taking on the grunt of the cost as well as the negative aspects of these rentals. So if they're gonna stand on the row, they need to support themselves.
So you would increase, if I understand you correctly, you would increase the fines and the violations and maybe even have a fee at the beginning?
Right, I, okay, let's say when you first cost thirty thousand dollars a year and you think that you're gonna have fifteen rentals, then they can pay two thousand dollars upfront.
Okay, any other comments?
I think a use fee is reasonable, but it would be more reasonable to be a, like a nightly attack style fee. So that you're not only allowing people who are full-time renting their house every single night, all summer. Those are the only people that need worth it for, if you make us flat fee. But if you make it a per-night fee, then you create a disincentive for constant rentals. Or, and I don't think this was discussed, a cap on the number of nights per summer that you can rent. On a short-term basis, like a thirty-day or night cap. So that it remains primarily. A single-family home that is only occasionally rented. But that's not in there. Other thing, I think based on what you had said. In D one there on the lake use, I think no motorized boats is perfectly reasonable. Now, obviously, I'm looking at a real small lake. I know Saddle Lake's very different, but people are idiots in boats who don't know what they're doing. Like, I'm okay with an idiot in a kayak. I'm an idiot in a kayak sometimes. But a motorized boat just creates a lot more risk. So if you're gonna limit it to one, why not just say zero?
Any other comments?
Why are you receiving the use tax when you're repaying that state mission and it is triple down into the communities? And I will look into that project.
I also, is there any? Is the state stepping into this? Is there a new proposal to regulate? Bill told me that there was. I haven't heard anything about it. There was last year and it didn't pass, but I heard that there was a new one, like in the last few weeks. Have you heard this? Right now?
Yes.
Okay, and last year it was to charge, that the primary thing was to charge was a six percent. Flat fee and that would trickle down to the townships. Is that correct? I'm just curious, if we did, if we did receive, I think, I think one thing that's bothering me about this is we don't receive revenue. I, the the fines and the violations don't begin to cover the use of, the what happens to the community with the.
Do you have permit costs?
Um, they're pretty minimal, like other communities around us.
So we have so many different areas and you have their own day and rate.
We don't right now, I should say, when I I'm speaking about the draft, yeah. Yeah, we don't right, we have no, we have no process right now.
Because like, you know, they have to pay the rental committee. Inspector's gotta come out and inspect it. We only rent the house, we don't rent bedrooms to different people. You rent the whole house. We don't rent to anybody younger than twenty-five. We don't advertise any bedroom that does not have a door. So sofa bed, air mattress, those aren't even included in in our advertising. Um, nor do we even provide them. So I think there, I. Would love to provide you examples of different communities and what they've done. Cause you know, I think that you guys should make up. With the fact that you've got somebody coming in the area. You know, and I, and I also, you know, I mean, I talked to the cleaner, she loves the job, she's making money. I think there could be a resolution where it's a win-win. But I think a permit cost, some local communities fifteen hundred dollars a year. One community is four hundred a year. You pay for that permit and then it brings money into the township. Just sit down to me.
The the townships around here, I think I saw. Is it five hundred or maybe seven fifty? For township in South Haven, Bloomingdale's a hundred dollars. Uh, yeah, um.
Yes, goes three something by.
Yeah, very, very nominal. Um, and I will point out, uh, one thing that we have done in here and and we've had comments on it. From short-term rental owners, you know, uh, but. This draft is written where during the summer months, memorial to summer to September, you cannot. Do a short-term rental that's less than a week. The whole idea of these folks coming in and out, in and out, like it is a hotel, it's not. It's a lake where people live there. So to allow a hotel-type building, um, where this in and out, in and out, two and three days. That's causing terrible stress and strain on the lake, on the land and the people that live there. So, um. I want you to make note of that, that the, it does say if during the summer months, it's gotta be a week. Um, and I've told you in the past that I've rented on satellite. I'm not this year. I'm just not. I'm going somewhere else. Um, but I'm used to, I think I've shared with you that. All the, we, for twenty-five, thirty years, I've done a weekly rental on a lake with my family and it's always been required to be a week, always. We've never, I would, I can't even imagine taking five kids and a bunch of grandkids and setting up a whole house for two or three days. It doesn't. It doesn't. So I just want to point that out.
But that does go on. I mean, I did have a wedding party here and they had a weekend rentals all over. You know, I use, I use it. I, you know, I'm, I'm on the, I'm on the fence a lot, but we have to. Get the income to to hire a person that can can run this. We can't sit back and and say, okay, and it's, it's gonna be the same as this. Light and everything else, since we're gonna look at it, what would we do?
Would you feel differently if we did make money off of it? We found a way to make some money and we could enforce it?
And put a cap on it.
If you could enforce it.
And and worked towards a cap?
But then you also have to consider, who do we represent? And will we, we represent the people that live in the community? Or somebody from outside that just wants to come here, they see an easy buyer, can we want to make a profit? So who do we represent?
The community.
The the people that live here.
So do we represent the full-time residents or all property owners?
Correct.
Or just people that want to. What's that?
Registered voters are the ones that put us in office.
Well, we're not elected.
Full-time residents put us in office.
That's why we don't make that decision.
We don't pay the big bucks, babe.
It's the people that live here full-time that that we actually get tax revenue from. The part-timers, the people from Chicago that aren't on a place on the lake.
Or Detroit.
We got nothing. I mean, we got.
Well, we we do get some.
Don't they pay for taxes? Doesn't that trickle down to you?
No.
No.
That's a little mystery.
Some, some taxes do. We love the, uh, one percent collection fee of taxes. We're allowed to collect on our special assessment, district, fire, police, roads. What's the other one? Well, senior services that we don't actually use here and library that we don't use here.
So it's, it's dollars. It's not thousands of dollars.
It's not thousands of dollars. Our total revenue from the state of Michigan is somewhere around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to operate the township.
I thought that.
And we take in so much more tax money that goes to the state of Michigan. And when it gets distributed back down, it goes to other townships that, uh. Instead of us. They get more money than we do, even though we bring in about twice the revenue that they do.
Why is that?
Why is that?
Why is that? Because the state of Michigan says that we get paid by sales tax. We get a portion of the sales tax and they take population for the, all the, all the townships, add it all up. And whatever population you have in your township, you're gonna get X amount of dollars. So if somebody has more X amount of residents, they're gonna get more money than us, even though we have a higher tax revenue. At tax base.
Ken, could you help me understand? I know we've talked about this, but I forgot. I thought that the second homeowner pays an eighteen millage on our school. Help us understand that. Help us understand that.
That goes to schools.
Well, say it out loud for everybody. What, who who pays? We don't, full-time residents.
Eighteen mills. And if you're a resident of the, the township and you're what's called a homeowner resident. You can get what's called a pre. And it's eighteen mil reduction in your property tax. Now, if you own a home and then you have a, another home. Only one is your permanent, so the other home is gonna get the eighteen mills on it, even if you live here. But if you live outside, you're gonna be hit with the eighteen mills and that goes to schools, no one else but schools.
So I mean, I I I do think that that needs to be said. So so if I understand what you said correctly. Um, someone who owns a second home and rents it out could be paying that eighteen mills for our schools and we are not. As residents, we are not. So I think.
What I'm saying, Kate.
Did I miss that?
Is we get money based on sales tax.
Did I miss it? Did I, did I misunderstand? No, the eighteen mills. No, no, the eighteen mills.
Eighteen mills, that's still school.
Correct, and it's paid for by people that have second homes. It's again, non-residents. That's what I'm trying, that's all the only point I'm trying to get out of here. Okay, all right. Does everybody get that point?
You made a completely different point.
Non-residents pay eighteen millage for schools, residents don't.
Yes, but the goal wasn't about schools, is the whole point. The point was that, uh. Township gets more money from actual residents, people who live here from the state. Than, uh, for investors or people who have second houses.
That point's been made. I'm trying to make another simple point. The simple point is, it's not true to say. The second homeowner doesn't contribute at all. They do. Eighteen millages eight on taxes and that's a big deal. Um, so.
Let's also point out that most of our second homes are on lakes. For people that are not in our community. That have built very expensive homes and they pay a huge amount of taxes to the state of Michigan. Through us, to the state of Michigan, and basically, we again, only get it based on population return. And it was about two hundred and fifty thousand last year.
So it doesn't benefit the township to have high-value houses on the lakes because of the tax structure?
It's better for us to have residents than it is to have other states.
Which can't force that. You can't force that. Yeah, can't make people live there.
And far, farmers get a little tax break too, more than.
We can't go the opposite way either.
What do you mean?
Encourage people not to live there and to use their property as short-term rentals.
Yeah, I think we all agree on that.
Gives us nothing.
The intent of our zoning ordinance is to increase our population by stating single-family dwellings.
Well.
That is the purpose of it.
Okay, again.
They want non-transients in our township. They want people here that will build our community. So that we get more tax money, so that we can thrive and have a better community.
And and I get that's your point of view. And and all I'm saying is there are other perspectives. And and we will run head into that if if, no matter what, what, no matter what we do. And so, so the township board's gonna have to make a risk analysis about, you know, where's our highest risk and what's gonna cost us and, because we're gonna have to defend. I'm pretty sure, whatever it is that we do. And it's just, it's just not correct to say that. Saddle Lake and North Lake and Munson Lake and Silver Lake are residential. The residential resort is a different category. The language is different, the intent is different, the density is different. And I, I know you don't like it when I say that, but I'm just looking at the language in our. I'm, thank you. Don't get mad at me. I know it's emotional for you. You live on Saddle Lake. I don't live on a lake. I, all I, I, I'm just trying to say that. There's, it's not a cut and dry. It's not cut and dry. You may decide to ban and that'll be your decision. But it'll cost us. And that's a, that's, and and you may decide to do nothing and that's a decision, but it'll cost us. And we may decide to do an ordinance and that's a decision, but that has a cost too. So, so just. To overs, don't overstate that everything's residential. We have, we have issues with the way our ordinance is currently written.
Yeah, I think that the word resort came from, in the old days, these houses around these lakes had no heating. They were just here for Memorial to Labor Day and it was considered to be the resort community for the people who owned the houses during that period of time.
That's what I thought, but that's not what my research shows.
What's that?
That's not what my, I, that's what I thought, then I did some research. It's just not what it shows, is, um.
I mean, I, I.
I'm, I'm, I did, I did some research on case law and others, and other areas that have. Used the term residential resort and short-term rentals and it's just not cut and dry. It's just, it, the language is a little troublesome. It doesn't mean we wouldn't prevail in a ban. It's just not cut and dry. So I, and I, I don't, I know people are emotional about this, but. But the best way to handle this is to not be emotional and to try to look at it factually and objectively best you can. To make a decision that's the best for the township.
And how do you know that your definition of resort is the definition that should be used?
Well, technically, a definition of resort is a popular, a popular destination for vacations or recreation, which is frequently by. For a particular purpose. So it's not necessarily a home dwelling place. For a particular purpose, so it's not necessarily a home-blowing place, it's a place that goes for a particular purpose and a vacation. That is the definition and the picture of a resort.
So as a zoning board, is it theoretically possible to change an R-two zoned area into an R-one zoned area?
We'd have to go through a whole public process to do that.
That would give you protection from what you're concerned.
Again, no matter what we do, it's, it's gonna be, um, and I just, I just want us all to. Try to stay cool and try to be factual and. Recognize that if we, we'll get to the right answer, I'm sure we will.
We don't want campground.
I think if you're gonna do anything with it. You gotta figure out first how you're gonna fund the whole thing. Enforcing, in case you get a lawsuit.
Yep.
All these things are gonna.
We got insurance, right?
They do.
Yeah, um, that's, that's been a quick field, do you guys have any thoughts on that? How, you know, would, would you be open to? So if we decide we're gonna ultimately get a zoning enforcement officer, would you be open to that person potentially taking on the blight as well as? The registration process and inspections, and would that be a good job description for someone, one person?
You're gonna need someone, you can't just put a zoning ordinance out and not enforce it.
Correct.
Cause we have that problem now, we don't enforce our zoning.
So what do you, so, what, that's what I'm saying is, what if we hired someone, how do you, what do you think about that?
I still think it shouldn't be allowed in this township.
Are you in favor of a blight enforcement officer?
Yes.
Okay, but you, but you just wanna ban, you don't even wanna talk about if we did have a short-term rental, you know, things you would be. Find comfortable, you just wanna only ban it, and that's all you wanna talk about, you don't wanna talk about if we did go to an ordinance, what might work for you?
If you, if you're going to go with an ordinance, then you're gonna have to have somebody to enforce.
Okay, would it be comfortable for you? I'm just, just, we're just talking here, we don't make the decision. If we did fi, fi, if we did. Hire a zoning enforcement officer, in your mind, could that same person take on the short-term rental certification?
I guess that's up to the person.
But I mean.
Cause it's gonna be, you know, they're gonna be on-call twenty-four seven.
It's, it's kind of a part-time job, and then, yeah.
It's gonna be an on-call job.
For a few months a year, there's a certification process takes about three months, and then you're not.
Yeah, I'm gonna pay them on-call.
All I'm asking for is theoretically, could this person do both jobs? And.
If it's the right person.
It's the right person, yeah.
What is our estimate of the number of short-term rentals we have? So therefore, an estimate of what, what's the funding that we?
Thirty, thirty-two is what one of our residents was able to find on Airbnb and VRBO. That doesn't mean we've got them all, as they pointed out in this.
Yeah, yeah.
In this, there's many other aggravating, we didn't even try to look at those, we just looked at VRBO and Airbnb.
So, and what, what was our fee that we were charging?
Um, I think it was five hundred dollars. That's all, these are just, you know, we haven't really talked about what, I just threw numbers out, I think if we. We're gonna move ahead and actually do something, you may wanna change some of those numbers. Especially if you decide you want it to pay for itself, or make some revenue. So far, the townships around us, I'm not saying this is, this, the townships around us are not making money. On their short-term, I'm talking about Costco, South Haven Township, Village of South Haven, Village of South Haven just really upped their fees. And are starting a whole new process, so they might make money on it.
We have one in South Haven, so yes, they just upped their rental.
Yeah, yeah, but Costco and South Haven and ourselves, and Bloomingdale, not ourselves, and Bloomingdale. Um, they all have ordinances and. They barely, they barely pay for the program.
So for, for each house, for each house, if there's one house. That you turn into a short-term rental, instead of having two people living there full-term. Two people living there full-term would give us like four thousand bucks, I mean. A small house with two people that live there full-time?
Oh, we don't get that much for those two people.
Oh, how much would we get for two people?
Oh, well, let's say we got two hundred and fifty thousand, you got, uh. Forty-four hundred goes into theirs, so about a hundred bucks ahead, I think.
Oh, is that all? That's all?
We're not, well, we only got.
Yeah.
Twenty, twenty-two thou, thousand, twenty, two hundred people living here. Into two hundred and fifty thousand, what does that come out like? Huh? Hundred and four? Oh, oh, hundred and four thousand?
No, dollars. You were right when you said one hundred.
When I said, when I said a hundred, I was right?
You were correct.
I like hearing that.
You kinda do.
Really don't have the infrastructure for this.
I, I understand your point.
You know, um, if you pay twenty dollars an hour times twenty-four hours in a day for someone to. Um, um, enforce this, times ninety-one days, that's forty-five thousand five hundred dollars worth of salary. So we, we need a fifty thousand, plus you got taxes on top of this too. Um, so we would need over fifty thousand collected from the short-term rental.
Six times post-security and all sorts of stuff.
Right, I know, so we need, need over a thousand dollars collected.
And then administrative fees on top of that.
We don't even have a fire department.
And we don't even have a fire department, yeah.
We need somebody like this lady.
Okay.
Name's Vacation.
Any other thoughts from the board here?
Can I ask what you mean by enforcement for the short-term rentals?
Um, somebody, a neighbor complains, um, it, it's not, it's not, the problem's not handled. And, and there's a fine associated with that, if it's not resolved within an hour.
Do you get a lot of complaints from the short-term rentals?
We don't regulate them right now, so. Um, whether we get complaints from short-term rentals or not, I, I don't know that we can pinpoint that, we get complaints, right, Ken?
I get a lot.
You do?
I don't know, do you always know if they're short-term rentals or not?
I, I'm just talking about. I get a lot of complaints about blocking fire lanes, I get complaints about, uh, noise, I get complaints about. Use of the lake, I get complaints about crowding them out of their property, trespassing. Jim still here? Jim, did I miss anything?
I think you're, you're doing a big job of it.
Keep going.
Short-term rentals.
They, they lock you into your own driveway, so you can't get out.
And they will alert us and let us.
Yeah, I, I.
It's bullshit too.
Like it?
The homeowner's gonna be watching out for you and helping you out, if they see people in, whatever.
Okay, alright, then, public, we don't go back and forth like this during public comment, we know, we don't, you direct your comments to us. And I'm actually being generous, letting you talk. Um, so we're gonna, I'm gonna close it, you'll have one more time for public comment before the meeting is over. Is there anything else we wanna talk about? Alright, does anybody wanna make a motion about how we handle this? Next steps, we, we had one, but it, we didn't.
We'll send it to the board like that.
Do you wanna send it to the board with no recommendation? Is that your motion?
I didn't change my mind, I know this.
I'm just so on the fence about it, maybe I can see how difficult this is gonna be for the board to. Enforce and raise the funds to enforce it, and go through it, review it, and then assign caps the second year. Um, but then also, I feel like people that have been having a short-term rental here for a while, that they sort of shouldn't be just cut off. Um, so I don't know what the best thing to do is. Maybe it's up to the board.
They asked the planning commission to look at it and to generate the ordinance, that's all they've asked you to do, they didn't ask you to vote yea or nay on it. Just do what they ask. I think you did what they asked, because they asked you to look at the video. And incorporate some of that stuff from the video into this, this ordinance. And I think Kate has done that.
So we don't need to make a motion on this.
Yeah, I wouldn't, uh, I would just, a motion to send it back to the township board for their consideration.
I just think all the public comment will probably go with the minutes, and then.
Yeah.
I would think that the board would read the minutes and look at all the public comments and then.
Yeah, maybe there's been a lot.
Or the leakages on, passes on the information.
Where come?
We've been, we've been very careful to create a public record that has your comments in it, that's, we've been very careful about that.
That's.
Or we'll continue to do that, yeah. Okay, so.
Make a motion to pass this on to the board as, as we voted. No, just. Period, just pass it on to the board.
So Frank's motion is to pass the short-term rental draft on to the board with no recommendation. Is that, did I get that right? Okay, I'll second that.
Oh, sir, passing on. Yes.
Okay. And you're not voting?
I, I think I still have to say this, because I'm.
Okay.
Appeared so a conflict of interest.
We're gonna be in trouble one day when something, we have something that involves the entire community. And we all have to recuse ourselves.
Well.
I, I, I have a, a notice, during the township board meeting, somebody stated that I rented property. And I made a profit, and I have a conflict of interest, and I said I'm not renting property. I've been out of it for a few years, but it brought in a whole bunch of people that heard that I have a conflict of interest. And I'm staying with that, uh, it's an appearance of a conflict of interest, that a whole bunch of people believe I have that conflict of interest. I don't really necessarily think I have a monetary income on this, or that anything that would be a conflict of interest. But the appearance is definitely there.
Well, that's true for the whole board, because you live on the lake, and Gary lives on the lake. Out of the five board trustees, three live on a lake, and, and then are, are two.
You get accused of.
Excuse me, and then two, and then two.
That's not.
Alright, Ken, can I finish? The board has five people, three live on a lake. One has recused herself, she lives in Ag because she's a realtor, so that you have one person in Ag, and three people on a lake making a decision on short-term rentals. It's tricky. It's tricky. It's just tricky. I just need you all to understand that, there's no easy answer here. Um, the township has to make a decision, and it has to be the one that's right for the township.
I think the one that accused you though, Ken, is somebody that's possibly jealous. Because I remember.
Okay, okay, okay. We're gonna move on to the next item here, okay? I think I've been really generous with public comment here, and you will get another chance. Um. Okay, the, we have one piece of new business, and that is that we got a, a very substantial. Uh, zoning ordinance and gap analysis report from Williams and Works. Um, for those of you sitting there, it's in your packet, but I would love to hear from the commission what you think about this report.
Andy Moore, have you ever talked to this guy? He's a sharp guy.
Very. So is that, is that, anything else to say?
Well, um, I was pleased with it, I think full speed ahead.
Meaning what?
Continue with it, let them do the whole.
We can't afford it, we can't afford it, we don't have twenty-five thousand dollars for them to do it. Yeah, we can't afford it.
Well, you know, I've been.
Is that, is that their estimate for the cost? And we said we're doing this in twenty twenty-eight, right?
No, we're doing it starting now, you, you want us to do the master plan in twenty twenty-eight, no, we would start now. And you don't pay for an ordinance, wait two years, and, you know, no, you, you don't pay for an analysis and then do nothing with it. Technically, we would do it the other way, you would do the zoning after you did your master plan. But we decided not to change the master plan. Okay. Unless we just wanna revisit that decision, which we could do. Um, the master plan is five years old. Yeah, it's new. Um, a, a little, a, a little town like ours doesn't have to change it in five years, it can go town.
You wouldn't change the master plan?
No.
Twenty twenty-eight, we have to at least have a review of our master plan to.
Every five years, correct.
We need to at least review it and say that there's no changes, correct?
But it, it was new when you just did it, so. Well, it's already changed, the demographics are a little different, the fact that our fire department is no longer voluntary, that's changed. Um, beyond that, I think it's pretty accurate.
Okay. So the zoning ordinance is what we're gonna be.
The only thing I will say about the master plan, and I do.
Didn't you say that we don't have funding for that?
You told me we don't have funding for that, you're the funding man, the only other thing I will, um.
I didn't know we were ready to go.
With respect to the master plan, I wanna say something. Um, I think there were a hundred and thirty-six respondents. So we have about twenty-two hundred, twenty-five hundred people that live here. About a hundred and thirty-six people responded to surveys, and fifty of the thirty-six are lake owners. So we cannot say that the master plan truly reflects the whole community. On the other hand, I'm well aware, as you all are, how difficult it is to get the community to weigh in at all. Um, so it's not for lack of trying, and it's not for, it's not, it's not that the board or the planning commission that did this didn't try. But the people that came out were mostly on the lakes, so it's, it's a little weighted. Um, just, you, I, you know, that's my only other comment about the master plan. And I'm not sure that if we do it again anytime soon, or when we do it again, we'll get a different representation, I just don't know. It's hard to get people to come out and.
I would like to point out that they did also recommend putting the setbacks into the, the jurisdiction, into the districts.
So, so, yeah, if we, if I, I, but what do you think, Jay? About Williams, Dave, did you finish what you had to say?
Um, I'll continue, yeah.
What do you think?
And, um, we don't have the money to act on it now, where are we at? Can we do it ourselves?
We can do it ourselves and have, and have it, I think we can do a couple things, I think. I think we can, we can have a role for Williams and Works as a reviewer, like, we do the work and they review it, and ultimately, the township attorney reviews it. So in that way, we, you know, that, I'm willing to do that, and I can do that, that's, that's something I know how to do. Um, and it would have to be, we'd have to pay for township lawyer review ultimately, and I think Williams and Work. Would probably be some kind of consultant fee in there, but not twenty-five thousand dollars. What's, go ahead.
So this is just a, a little piece, we had enough hours to pay for this.
Yeah, it was twenty-five hundred dollars for them to took, look at our entire zoning ordinance.
Entire.
And, and, and then tell us where their problems.
And they highlighted just these problems, and this is.
Yeah, yeah, we've got sixteen pages of. The whole ordinance, they're basically recommending rewrite the whole ordinance, mostly because it's so poorly organized. And it makes it really hard to follow.
Yes.
There's a few things that are just plain wrong, and that would be true of any zoning ordinance that hasn't been amended for a while, but the biggest issue isn't so much substantive. As I read it, unless we want it to be substantive, it's, it's just heavy to use, difficult to use.
There's eight thousand dollars in the budget right now.
How much?
Eight thousand.
Yeah, in the planning commission, yeah.
For professional services.
Okay, so we can't afford it.
So I wonder if they could do some sort of reformatting, reorganizing. To put like the definitions at the front.
I can do that.
Okay.
I can do that, and so, so if, let's just say we were gonna start, let's just say, let's give it a shot. It's, it's a big project, and it would take about eighteen months, I think, to get it done, it's a slow process, and. Um, you'd have to do it like section by section by section. So what I would, I've been thinking about this for a while, I'm not quite done thinking about it. Um, and taking some training materials and all that, my thinking is the first thing we would do, if we were gonna do this. Is we would make sure we agree on our land uses. And, and our definite, our one, our two, our O, is there any changing there, once we have that, I can start putting it together. Because Williams and Works is suggesting that we take each and every land use and put it in a separate article.
Yep.
And so then it becomes fairly easy to do, and then you can run it all through plain language, and. The real issue though is. You know, what do we wanna do, besides organizing it, is there, is there, is there, is there anything we wanna do?
Yes.
Um, and how do we start that discussion, and, and, and so my thinking, I'd like to comment on this, is.
We, we had this discussion already several times, and the two times we've tried to redo the ordinance already, so.
Well, what if we started with land use, what if we just started there, you know, like getting out, okay, let's, yeah, we, our next meeting.
I, but you, if I could talk for a minute, I will, uh, tell you what I'm gonna do. The township board denied money for buying a fire truck out of the budget. Which, uh, put three hundred and fifty thousand dollars back into our budget. And this causes something that we've been planning on doing for a couple of years, I've had it in the budget. To generate money, so I think I can take money, since we're not. Gonna be using that money to buy a fire truck and get you to twenty-five thousand.
You don't know that yet about the fire truck, you guys. You don't know that yet about the fire truck, you guys haven't finished that conversation, you might, right?
They haven't finished the conversation, they removed it from the budget.
So there's no financing, nothing?
They're giving, nothing for a fire truck, they were talking about, uh, making the fire department use their money to get a loan which they won't be able to pay off.
Did I miss a meeting? Me?
It was in, during our budget.
Yeah, okay, I was there, okay, I thought that there was further discussion going on.
No, they made me remove for, move that. So I had to remove all the money for the fire truck and it's on our agenda for the fire truck, but it would be with a loan. Using the fire fund balance and, as down payment.
Look, so I've been here about six years, we've been circling on this mess for six years.
Uh-huh.
And it's just gets more convoluted and more.
We rewrote it several times and, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and it's also, you, you had it better, you had it almost there, didn't you?
Yeah, it helps a lot.
We didn't send that draft over?
Helps a lot.
Well, so. So remember Christie and then I kind of left and then Beth kind of helped finish it and then that was the, the draft that we couldn't figure out which was the draft. And then I don't think that went to the board.
Yeah, I don't even remember, I remember I had the, I had the final draft.
Planning commission, but started to go through that because there were things in that that wasn't correct. That I know that you would not have wanted to adopt.
Yeah.
So we want, started to go through that, kind of fix that. Cause there was stuff in there that someone took from another township that shouldn't have been in there, so.
Yeah, Christie was good at her.
Yeah, so that's.
Yeah. Yep.
So where are we?
So, it's kind of part, part of the ordinance is, the first thing was reorganizing it. Putting it in a different format, organization.
Mm-hmm.
What, like a normal ordinance, your definitions, your general provisions.
Correct, yep.
Cycle interview.
Yep.
And moving at that, so that's the first thing.
Yep.
And then if you took all of their comments and possibly put them in there.
But I wouldn't, but, but, but where I think we bogged down in that, that's too much for us to do in a, in a, the, the way to take the, how do you take the commission and the public to the extent it's paying attention through that process, I've sat in these meetings where you've had the entire ordinance in front of you, it's, it's exhausting, you can't follow it. So my thinking was, you do it section by section and if, and, and that, that's easy and where you start, where you start with how your township land use is and make sure we all agree on that, is there anything we want to do differently, cause for example, not all of our zoning definitions are in the definition section, yeah.
The campground.
Yeah, for example, yeah, so.
Special use for campground, but it's not listed in the districts.
I think that if we just started there with land use and our current zoning classifications and, 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 and had that, that, that could take some time. That, that may not happen, you know, in one or two meetings, that may take some time, I don't, but it, the point is it's a process, it's a difficult process, but it's also why we exist. Our main, our main reason to exist as a commission is to do the master plan and to do zone.
And I also think if you do end up having Williams and Works do the ordinance, you still wanna have your input, so even if you decided what usage you wanted, you could just.
I'm really much more in favor of taking the laboring or in drafting and let them review, it's gonna be less expensive and, um, uh, they're not into the township in the same, you know, I, I, I think, I think we can, we can start if we're gonna do this, I think we can start it on our own and have it reviewed and save a lot of time and money. Uh, I'm just afraid we get a bit of a cookie cutter if we have them do it because that's what they do, I mean, I, I used to get paid to do this kind of stuff, um. Whereas, uh, we already have our ordinance, we're not really looking to change it for purposes of discussion, we're just looking to organize it in a way so we can have a discussion in a, in a methodical, process-oriented way.
In your, um, real language, what did you call it?
Uh, plain language.
Plain, yeah.
No leas.
Yes.
Yeah.
There's a lot of that.
It's awful, and I asked him not to give it to me and I still got it, so I, that's the other thing, yeah, um. I don't know, what do you guys think? Like, it's, it's, it's a, it's a labor of love, so to speak, for our township. It would give us a chance to really help shape the township for the next decade or so, you know, I mean, these things get, zoning ordinances get changed pretty often, but I mean, to really do a, an overhaul like this from an organization gives us a chance to really think about, you know, what, what do we need?
So if we're gonna do this ourselves, do you want to go ahead with your, your changes? Cause you're gonna have to put up with that.
So, I, so we do have that draft that was already reformatted and kind of reorganized.
Which draft?
Um, the draft that.
Are we talking about a zoning ordinance here?
The one that Leslie wrote?
Leslie, uh, we paid her like six thousand dollars to reformat it.
So we have one of those.
So we have a formatted one and we, it, uh, it wasn't bad, I saw that they were changing things that they shouldn't have changed, didn't it? That we need to probably relook at.
Maybe start with that particular draft because it's already formatted in the correct format.
And when you say it's, would I be, is it digitally available?
Yes.
That's what I care about, yeah, okay.
I, I did have a lot of comments on that, I, I was halfway through it with a lot of red.
Well, so the formatting work is already done, which would take a lot of time off of you, so if we, it's already, already definitions, the districts, the general provisions. It's already in that format, so.
Yeah, but your essential is starting all over, when you're taking your definition seven and you're moving to one.
That, that, it's already done, that draft already did it.
I'll have to see how it's formatted to know if I can work with that.
Yeah, I don't know what format.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure.
It's, it, formatting's intense.
Word or Google or.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I think I sent you the last version, right?
Yeah, I got, I got them, because we started going through it with the last planning commission.
Well, even if we were gonna give this to Williams and Works, I'm not sure what direction we would give them at this point, because I think we need to come to an understanding as a commission of what, if anything, besides this organization, is there anything else that, that this zoning ordinance needs? So what if the next meeting, I did just come up with a draft of just the section that defines all of our land uses and we maybe looked at that and just had a conversation about, does this reflect what we want for our township, does this reflect what we hear people want, I? Is this a, is this a logical way to start?
Let's give it, go for it, yeah.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Table this.
Well, if we start changing too much, we need to have, oh, comprehensive surveys and studies to go along with any change that we make that is drastic to their zoning.
No one's talking about that right now.
Public input of the end game.
Yeah, if we were to do a drastic change, but no one's talking about that, right? We're just.
You don't want to talk about a lot, okay?
No, I, no, I just don't, I'd like to finish, that's all, um.
And I think that you'll find that, like as an example, the daycare, foster care.
Yeah.
Adult foster care, those all need to be updated because the state has defined the definition, so those need to be up, those are things that have to be updated.
Okay.
And that's already language that other communities have already, so we could just kind of paste in the terms, that's, as a, that would be one thing that would be changed. But that's something that's already in the law that just, it's already there anyway.
Okay, well, just to sort of keep it simple for now and, um, if, I, I'm sensing consensus that we're.
If you want to give it a shot, sure.
At least on the land use and we could, we could have that conversation, because even if we decide it's too much, we want to go to Williams and Works, at least we start to get our brains going on.
What changes?
What, what, yeah, what if anything do we, yeah, yeah, no one's looking to change just to change.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Do you want me to like cut and paste them together so that they're kind of all like a one-page kind of thing or you'll kind of do that, could you have a word of the ordinance already, word format?
I'm able to take it, uh, yeah, right, yeah, but I will take a digital version, the complete one, right now I'm, I'm able to copy, I'm able to take, copy a section at a time and, and work with it that way, but I'll take a digital.
Okay.
Somebody has it.
Uh, the digital one I have at the current ordinance is all by articles. I don't have it in one fluid document.
Give me what you gave to Williams and Works, was that digital?
I gave them the PDF.
Okay, can you send me that?
You want PDF?
Yeah.
Okay.
Start with that.
Send that to me too, Kara.
And I, I'm not gonna do anything fancy, I'm just looking to give a, 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 a section on all of the for co, for our conversation, just take a good look at the, at the land uses, are we missing anything, do we need to improve something, tweak it, whatever. Okay, um. Are there any other comments or concerns about next steps with Williams and Works?
You convert a PDF to be able to do what you need to?
You can, yeah.
Oh, I guess I, I still have to say something, our township attorney believes that our zoning ordinance does not allow short-term rentals. She's basing it on a Michigan Supreme Court ruling where it says the short-term rental is less than a thirty-day rental cycle, then it is more like a motel. And motels are transient-type rentals which are not, uh, allowed in our district due to the fact that our permitted use is for single-family dwellings, in their definition, so a single-family dwelling is somebody that's there more than thirty days. And that's our township attorney's opinion on our zoning ordinance and why she does not believe anyone can claim, oh, non-conforming use or that they can use do it over, over and over again. That they were illegal when you came here.
Along the next thing, Ryan, we just denied a P U D because it was a commercial business in the residential area.
Yeah, and that's a commercial business.
Yeah.
Or family.
So we're getting kind of neurotic that some people say, yes, you can have a commercial business and some people we say, no, we can't.
Yeah, no, I, I know, I, I, there's, like I said, there's many perspectives, um, I understand what the township attorneys is, um, there are other perspectives and you'll find out if, if we, you know, you will, as we move through the process, you'll find out. Um, the best way to move through this from my perspective is to not hold one perspective, but to hold many and, and do the risk analysis in your brain, what's right for the township. But if you go into it, you know, with one view and one view only, you aren't even open to any other path, it's, it makes it hard to get to the right answer. And in, in, and in any lawsuit, there's always at least two sides, if not more, and I think you all know that, um, so.
And the attorney can argue either way.
They can, and a good one will.
They're very good at it.
And a good one will be able to see it, yeah. Yeah, so there's multiple perspectives on this, okay, is there anything else, public comment, or, uh, actually zoning reports, uh, Tasha?
Um, I did have the zoning report.
Anything you want to say?
Nope. Couple building permits were issued, nothing jumping on at me, that's.
Okay.
Abnormal, I guess.
Last chance for public comment? Yes?
Um, I, I just wanna.
Your name, please.
Janice Havis, not a resident, I do own a short-term rental, um, just for the record, I have some of an ordinance, registration, um, inspections, things like, because I do think it is important for, I can say, being good neighbor type policies. I think the reality is that as a short-term rental owner, you're going to be a good neighbor to the people around you, you would follow some of the rules that you have in the ordinance, right? When you associate fines with those, people tend to comply. I mean, I'd be scared about a thousand dollar fine, you know, I would make sure that my people were quiet, you know, after ten o'clock, et cetera, et cetera, so um, I just want to put that out there first, but, um, some of these things, I think should, I have pretty much like noise ordinances that should be enforced across the board, it's, I mean, their lake communities are built, um, with people using them with multi-generational families, whether they own the home or they rent the home. And it, I grew up on Saturday, it was noisy when the people from Chicago came up on the weekends, sometimes it was a little frustrating. But on the flip side, I'm now, I own part-time, you know, I, I own, I visit my house part-time and I rent it out, so I'm doing the same thing that did kind of offend me a bit as a young person, but I understood that that was the environment I lived in. Septic inspections, um, I just want to point out that, um, I do sell real estate and there is an ordinance in Columbia Township that says that upon sale, you know, they're supposed to have an septic inspection sent to the township and it's supposed to get approved, it never gets enforced. It happens, it comes up inside of work and they say, oh, it's not enforced, no big deal. I, I'm, to be clear, I don't, I don't know that that needs to happen, but it's just pointing to the fact that these ordinances, you guys have trouble enforcing them and I get it, because you're a township with limited funds, I totally understand it. Um, and noise ordinances, you know, things like that, it takes somebody to respond to that call and if it's not a police officer, if they won't respond, then who is it on? Put it on the home, I would be happy to come and regulate my, my tenants and I hope that, I'm sorry for those of you who are, who are having issues, I really am, because I would be horrified if my residents were irritating you all like that, I, I would go there and, and deal with it in person, or if I do live in here, I would have my resident, my agent, whoever that might be. Um, and I also just kind of want to point out that lake homes are usually non-residents, so I know the tax conversation has come up a lot here, where, you know, we pay homestead taxes or non-homestead taxes, the township only earns money when it's a homestead property, I get that. But most lake homes, whether they're a short-term rental or not, are not owned by, by residents, so I, I don't know that, um, eliminating short-term rentals would eliminate weekend, uh, demand on the lake or, uh, taxing the system. Um, and it's historically been an ag and resort community and that's what it still kind of is, right, I mean, we just need to be able to all get along, I know it's easier said than done, but I just want to give that perspective that um, I'm not against it as a short-term rental owner and I don't think that some of you are short-term rental owners. Most of us welcome this because we want to be good short-term rental owners, we want to have good relationships with our neighbors and, um, anyway, sorry.
It's okay, thank you.
That was not succinct enough, but there you go.
Any other public comment? Okay, any final comments from anybody here? Okay, this meeting is adjourned at nine oh three, even though it says ten oh three, you have to change the clock.
Well.
Give you more, right?
Yes, I, I might, I, yes, I definitely, you can try and look at your words.
I'll just.
All my northern views are blocked by woods.
Are they, yeah.
Well, if you look straight up, maybe.
I guess we got a camera.
Oh, yeah, I, so I did see them a year ago. Remember, remember when this all started, I think it was last summer and I literally, I got to bring in all my.
Yeah. How you doing? Talked to my friends back in, probably in Chicago, they seen them all that night, they seen them all over.
Well, it was all cloudy there, but tonight we have a clear night, I think we may see. Yeah.
Drive down to here. Um, I've seen a lot, I used to go fishing up in the Canada.
Beautiful.
Couple burners, something.
Okay.
Some burners.
Oh, meteor, okay.
Burners, they, they, yeah. And I'm trying to get them to, get them.
Mission for a while I have been, I don't know.
See, that was really hard.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you don't, I believe.
I'm on the fence, um.
It's an easy decision, it's not an easy decision. But I, but I also, there's something that happened, really is forming uneasy with. Just, just doesn't feel right.
We should be a. And a lot of people that come here as rentals, they're gonna come back later when they're older and buy.
Buy, I mean, that's how we ended up doing that, we become a vacation, and I just.
That doesn't happen, that can help, but this farmer, not for any revenue from it.
No, we, it's, it's not, and, and, so, you know, we, we miss that.
Oh, not too bad, that's.
Nobody else?
I'm not saying. Just wake up and.
Just wake up and start.
So are you guys comfortable where we are?
I mean, we are where we are. Oh, right, yeah.
I am disturbed, I just picked up.
But I know what I need.
From the master plan, you realize that when you're working on it, like fifty, a hundred, thirty, or forty. People responded for the master plan. Like, I just said, me, boy, I mean, I just, I just saw, you know, there are twenty-five hundred. Did the best you could, I mean, with other towns, yeah. Very difficult to getting public input. You look, Baybor's looking at it, they're. Okay, so, you know, yeah, my best.
Yeah, I'm okay. I just noticed the meeting's still recording.
Oh, let's turn it on. How do we do that? Do we unplug it here?
Probably right here somewhere.